Welcome to the regularly scheduled City Commission meeting. It is four o'clock on Wednesday, March 6th. Excuse me. I would like to recognize my good friend, Reverend Sheldon Steen of the Press Training University Center on Florida State's campus, also known as UCIRK. Please come and provide the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Reverend?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an honor to be here. Thank you all. Please join me in the invocation. God of mercy and grace, we give you thanks for this day and for the work that is before us. We pray especially for the members of this commission. We are thankful for those who answer the call to service and to leadership, and we pray that you would fill them with a spirit of compassion, empathy, generosity, and grace, that they would be guided by truth, that they would seek wisdom, and God in all of their deliberations and their decisions, that they would consider especially the most vulnerable in our community, that you would give them a common vision for the common good, that we might all work together to continue to make this city even better for more people. God be with us all, be with them, especially we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Steen, thank you very much for joining us. I know that today is a busy day, being Ash Wednesday, and I know you have services to attend to, so thank you for carving out time and being with us. We certainly do appreciate it. Mr. City Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Items 5.01, 5.02, and 11.03 have been added to your agenda materials. Item 12.04, a date has been updated in that material, and materials have been added to item 13.02 since the original publication of the agenda.
All right. Excellent. Any objections to the agenda modifications?
None.
Seeing none, let's move into presentations. Our first presentation for Women's History Month will be presented by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, my colleagues, for this opportunity. As I read this proclamation, I'm going to ask that all the women dress in white if you will come forward for a photo opportunity as I read. Expedientiously, expedientiously...
Expedientiously.
...from the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, proclamation. Whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas, American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation by... Take the glass off so I can see. By constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home, and whereas, American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor of the nation, and whereas, American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in our nation, and whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic backgrounds served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, and whereas, American women have served our country courageously in the military, and whereas, American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all, and whereas, despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore, I, John E. Daley, as mayor, along with my colleagues on the City Commission, join in the celebration of March being designated as Women's History Month and March 8th International Women's Day. In witness whereof, I have therefore, whereunto set my hand and cause the seal of this city to be affixed. For a copy of this proclamation with a signature, you may receive that online at the board docs, but we also have copies today if you'd like to take a hard copy with you. But just want to say, go ahead, just want to say, thank you, women, proud to be one. And we thank the mayor and my colleagues for allowing us this opportunity for this photo op to show others, and we're wearing white for women's suffrage in case you were not aware. Thank you.
Right. Right, Commissioner?
You're not going to get in the picture, Elaine?
Yeah, come here.
You're not going to get in the picture?
Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead, Commissioner.
We have another proclamation today. If Jackie Wilson is here, we'll ask her to come forward with the other members of the National Association of Women in Construction. From the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, proclamation. Whereas, the Tallahassee chapter of the National Association of Women in Construction has distinguished itself for 57 years as the voice of women in construction in Tallahassee and the surrounding Big Bend area, and whereas, the work done by the Tallahassee chapter of the National Association of Women in Construction has greatly benefited Tallahassee through community development and educational programs, and whereas, the Tallahassee chapter of the National Association of Women in Construction has unceasingly enhanced the employment and success of women in the construction industry, and whereas, the National Association of Women in Construction has been a dynamic force in fostering community development through beautification and renovation projects, promoting skilled trades workers, and creating a positive vision for the future. And whereas, the Tallahassee chapter of the National Association of Women in Construction has sought to achieve prosperous results for Tallahassee and the surrounding Big Bend area in a cooperative spirit with other organizations. Now therefore, I, John E. Daley, as mayor, along with my colleagues on the City Commission, do hereby recognize the Tallahassee Chapter Number 72 of the National Association of Women in Construction for their dedication and commitment to supporting women in construction, and proclaim the week of March 3rd, 2019, as Women in Construction Week. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed. John E. Daley, Mayor, March 6th, 2019. Congratulations.
Jackie, you want to provide a few words?
Well, I'd like to say thank you again. We appreciate the support that we have continually gotten over the years. This is our president this year, Heather Weigle, and Heather actually is a project manager on a city project, the airport. They're paving today, so she came off the site to come out and come up here and help accept this proclamation. You know, our organization is all about going that one step further and helping promote women in very non-traditional roles mainly in the construction industry where you don't always think of women working. So we try to give women that opportunity for fellowship and networking with other women in the industry. We try to promote opportunities for women in the industry for jobs and careers, and we promote education and training for the skilled trades, and there are opportunities, there are great opportunities for women to be in the skilled trades and in construction jobs where they can make great money. We know college isn't for everybody, and sometimes going this route is much better and many times much better in the long run economically. So we appreciate the community's support. We do a number of things in the community. We appreciate your support. We appreciate the commissioners, and John, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Absolutely. Thanks for coming out. Mr. City Manager, do we have any announcements this evening?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Treasurer Clerk, do we have any public speakers on agendted items?
Mayor, we have three speakers on agendted items, but each has indicated they would like to speak at the time of the item, so we do not have anyone at this point in the meeting.
Wonderful. Is there anybody else from the public that has joined us this evening that would love to have an opportunity to speak right now on an agendted item? Seeing none, we'll move on. Mr. City Manager, do we have any boards, committees, or other governments that are here for communication purposes?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we are on the consent agenda item. Are any of the consent agenda items have been pulled?
No.
So a motion for consent?
Motion.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Dr. Bryant. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. We are on number 11.01, and that, I believe, we're going to have a brief introduction by the City Manager, and then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bryant, since it is your appointment, so that you can make the announcement. So would you just introduce the item?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. This is the appointment. An item involves the appointment to the Tallahassee Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. I'll just make that brief introduction and turn it over to Commissioner Bryant.
This is Dr. Bryant's appointment, so Dr. Bryant, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me first ask Attorney Lyndebon Edwards if she would please stand and be recognized. It is with esteemed honor that I nominate her to serve as a member of the Tallahassee Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. Currently, she is partnered with Rumberger, Kirk, and Caldwell. She specializes in employment law, serves on mediation panels, is the vice chair of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee for her firm, has legal experience spanning 25 years or more, has been recognized with various honors as a phenomenal woman with distinguished service in the legal profession. She brings to the table a wealth of leadership and human resources and various community service connections. Thank you, Attorney Edwards, for your willingness to serve on the Tallahassee Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. It is my esteemed honor to make a motion, if I might, that we appoint Attorney Lyndebon Edwards to this position.
Motion has been properly made and seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Thank you so much for your willingness to serve. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We are on item 11.02. I'm turning to the City Manager for the introduction of the item.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, item 11.02 is the appointment of a member to the commission to serve as an ex officio member of the Council on Culture and Arts. We recommend that you and your colleagues vote to assign a member of this body to that council, and that the term would be unlimited unless otherwise designated by you.
Hold on, define unlimited, just...
There is no defined years of service that it would last until you changed it.
Until death do you part.
Where have I heard that?
I think that's in the positive, Commissioner Richardson.
All right, sounds good, 11.02. One of us needs to serve on the Council of Cultural Arts. Is there anybody that's interested in serving by chance?
Mr. Mayor, well, I was interested until I heard about the death part, so now I might have a little cold feet, but...
Literally, literally cold feet.
But yeah, just being a business owner in the arts district, you know, I love to serve in that role.
Well, people are just dying to jump in on this opportunity. Oh, gosh, my goodness, it's going downhill from here.
I'd like to move that we appoint Commissioner Jeremy Matlow to the Council on Culture and Arts.
Commissioner Matlow has volunteered for additional workload by serving as our representative on the Council of Cultural Arts, which on a serious note is a wonderful organization, and thank you for stepping up to the plate. I will second the motion. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Commissioner Matlow, thanks for serving. We appreciate it. We're on item 11.03. Mr. Treasurer Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Just bringing this item to your attention, as you are all aware, Joe Malashevsky is your very capable city auditor who has identified his next opportunity, and toward that end, he'll be serving with us through March the 28th, at which time he will be moving on to that next opportunity.
Okay, before we get into the item, let's take a second and pause. Joe, will you please stand to be recognized? It has been an honor and a privilege to serve with you. We are sad to see you go. We understand the incredible opportunity that you have to go serve FAMU as the auditor. It's a huge responsibility, and we certainly do appreciate it. But thank you for your service to the city, and it truly has been an honor to work and serve with you. Really do appreciate it.
And what you have in the agenda item is a process, and I won't insult your intelligence by reading it back to you, but I do want to point out just a couple of things. In addition to asking you to approve a process for selection of a new city auditor, which actually was the process that led to Joe coming on board, so we know it worked well at least once and hope it'll work well again, you do need to identify someone to serve in the interim capacity until the new permanent city auditor is put in place, and the timeline that is attached may need to be shifted with various pieces, but the key in that timeline was to make sure that between now and when you take a break on July the 10th, summer break, by that date, you will have an opportunity to interview candidates, select, and then hopefully also negotiate a contract so that you can complete that process by July the 10th.
Excellent. First of all, do we have any public comments on the issue? Seeing none. Okay. Reverend Sims, three minutes, your name and address for the record, please.
Is that three hollow-filled minutes? My name is Stanley Sims.
No, sir, it is not.
Avondale Way. I just could not, when you go to replace Joe, it's bittersweet. We need someone just like Joe. All of my years, and my mom retired from the city, I've worked for the city, my children worked for the city, I've never seen city auditors engaged out here in this community. I've never seen a city auditor take someone as eccentric as I am, because they, everybody tell me I talk loud, and that's why they scuttle me, but I never scared Joe. Every time I went to Joe, Mr. Mayor, he spoke with me, treated me with respect, and the value of that is, for an auditor to be out in our community, because it's not just about numbers. Those numbers impact lives, and the only way that I am so excited or feel okay about him leaving is that he's going to my alma mater, and that's what this city is responsible for, is bringing in elites like Joe. So all of you city employees who don't like me or scuttle me, ask Joe what did he do so that me and him can have a mutual friendship of respect, and because he cares for our city, he just got here, he has demonstrated, he's made himself available, and Mr. Mayor, I would be remiss, because I come up before you, always calling you out, so I wanted to call Joe out today. I wanted to buy him a hat, but I checked that the ethics rules, he's not allowed to accept any FAMU peripheral familiar, but right now, so as you go through this search process, don't just get somebody that's good with numbers, get somebody that's good with numbers and good with people, and also good with STEM.
Thank you, Pastor Sims. Certainly do appreciate it. Do we have any other citizens that'd like to comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, let's move forward, and we'll go ahead and open it up for questions and comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate Don Hancock, who is currently serving in the office of the auditor, as our interim auditor until such time as we appoint a permanent individual to that position.
A second.
There is a nomination for Mr. Don Hancock, who currently serves... Now, Don, stand up.
Yeah.
There we go. Thank you for stepping up. I understand also that retirement is coming up soon, is that correct? And so thank you for serving out the rest of your career with the city as the auditor. We certainly do appreciate it. Are there any other questions or comments?
I would just say, Mr. Mayor, Don served in the interim capacity prior to Joe being, so he's had that experience as well, so...
Right, and we certainly do appreciate it, really do. Look forward to working with you. With no further comments on the motion that's on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, let's speak specifically to the process, and let's be very clear. As you all know, there are four people that are appointed that report directly to the City Commission. The auditor is one of them. This is a very important position and something that we take very seriously. The process that is detailed in front of us is a nationwide search to find the best of the best, to come serve the citizens of Tallahassee. It will be above board, it will be 100% transparent. Are there any questions, and is there a motion to the process that's being presented by staff?
I would move that we accept the process that's being outlined by staff, Mr. Mayor.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, it's been seconded by Dr. Bryant. Are there any questions or comments on the process? We'll take as long as you all want on this issue.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, just again, because I was here when we appointed, I'm going to say Joe, because I can't get the last name right. And the process was very transparent, it was an open process, we involved a citizen committee that vetted the applications and made the final recommendations to us, you know, for the interviews. We had excellent candidates, and so the process really worked, and you see what the end result was in our current auditor, so I would suggest we adopt that process for this time around as well.
Wonderful. Commissioner Matlow?
So I'd like to thank Mr. Hancock for stepping in to fill that role before retirement. It makes this process a lot easier when people don't have to think the interim director or the interim auditor has an upper hand in the application process, and we welcome everyone to apply, and I'm sure we'll try to fill Joe's shoes, but not quite do it, but we'll get a good person.
Commissioner Williams-Cox for comment?
I'm on board.
Fantastic, wonderful. So we have the process in place, we have the interim in place. Do we need to take a motion on the third recommended action, or is it just simply a reminder, since we adopted the process, Madam Attorney, that each one of us will be able to appoint one citizen to be on the Citizen Review Committee? We need to make that appointment by April 7th, so whatever your internal process is for that selection, just know that by April 7th, we need to have that in place, okay? And I'm assuming that since it was part of the...
Did you vote on the other? I know there are motions, but I don't hear a vote.
Correct. Okay, but what I'm saying is, do we need to, can we make that part of the motion, or do we have to have a separate motion for the third recommendation?
No, you don't have to have a separate motion.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just want to make one point, and I, because, you know, we all have mutual friends in the city of Tallahassee, but John Grayson was my appointment for the last committee, and I intend to ask him to serve again, so several of us aren't asking the same person.
Okay, all righty. So the motion on the table is technically for recommended action number two and three, properly seconded by Dr. Bryant. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Excellent. So we are now moving on to item number 12.01, introduction of ordinances.
Thank you.
I'll hand it off to you, Mrs....
Thank you, Mayor.
Excuse me, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. So item number 12.01 is introduction of ordinance number 19-0-06, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending section 6 of the Charter of the city of Tallahassee to annex within the corporate area of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, upon adoption of said ordinance, property being situated in Leon County, Florida, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for severability, conflicts, and effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for April 24th, 2019, at 6:00 PM in the city of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Wonderful. Do we have any public speakers?
No, sir.
Do we have anybody here that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, turn to my colleagues. Any comments, motions, questions?
Move the item, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem moves the item. Is it seconded by Dr. Bryant? Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes 5-0, number 12.02.
Item number 12.02, introduction of ordinance number 19-0-10, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee adopting a small-scale amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan, providing for severability and conflicts, and providing an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for the joint meeting of the City Commission and Leon County Board of County Commissioners on March 12, 2019, at 6:00 PM in the chambers of the Leon County Board of County Commissioners at the Leon County Courthouse.
Mr. Treasurer Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item?
We do not.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I turn to my colleagues. Any motions, comments, or questions?
Move the acceptance.
Commissioner Williams-Cox moves the item as recommended, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes 5-0. We're on item number 12.03.
Item number 12.03 is introduction of ordinance number 19-Z-04, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending the Southwood Plan Unit Development on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the City Commission, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for March 27, 2019, at 6:00 PM in the city of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Mr. Treasurer Clerk, do we have any public speakers on this item?
We have no speakers.
Is there anyone here that would care to speak that hasn't had a chance to fill out a card? Seeing none, colleagues, motion, comment, questions?
Move the item, Mr. Mayor.
It's probably moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes 5-0. We're on item number 12.04.
Item number 12.04, introduction of ordinance number 19-Z-11, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as an N University Transition UT on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the City Commission, providing for conflict and severability, and providing an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for April 24th, 2019, at 6:00 PM in the city of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Mr. Treasurer Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
No, sir.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I turn to my colleagues. Comments, questions, motions?
Move staff recommendation.
Properly moved by Dr. Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes 5-0. Policy formation and direction, we're on item number 13.01. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. At your last commission meeting, you directed staff to develop a recommended process for selecting the future Tallahassee Police Department Headquarters site. You indicated that the site selection process should be open to all properties throughout Tallahassee and include public input. Staff has developed a recommended process that allows for wide consideration throughout Tallahassee and a call for properties throughout the public, or from the public throughout the city, as well as public input and participation. We are also recommending approval to higher professional services, including the completion of the current RFP process to select an architectural and engineering firm. Deputy City Manager Cynthia Barber is here, as well as Assistant City Manager Ro Lavin, and Assistant City Manager Wayne Tetter is going to walk through the presentation.
Mr. Tetter, good to see you.
Good to see you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. If you recall, in 2016, the police department performed a five-year strategic plan. In that plan, there were two goals related to facilities and how we deal with those facilities. Goal number one was, quite frankly, to develop a plan for a new state... Goal number one was, quite frankly, to develop a plan for a new station. Goal number two was basically deal with what they've got until that time comes that the new facility is completed. So, priority, so what have we done according to the goals that have been adopted in their strategic plan? First of all, we have a spatial needs analysis. There was five steps for that, so five steps, beginning with spatial needs analysis, that was completed, that identified both short and long-term needs for size of the facilities. The second goal, initiate the contract for development of a draft plan. We have actually contracted with a construction manager. What we do not have is the services from an architect and engineer. So, we're asking for that direction today as well. The third step, community engagement, again, that's gonna be an ongoing, in process. What we're presenting to you today has a very robust public involvement component moving forward. Establish a police internal planning team. The police chief has done that, he's assembled his team, they're ready, hit the ground once the facility and the design team gets added to the, to our project management team. And then lastly, how we transition moving into those facilities. So, the process that we identified for you today is really a two-step process. What we have from phase one, from a call for potential locations, I love the term that Commissioner Matlow indicated today, this call for sites is really the greatest RFP without an RFP process, where anyone and everyone can actually submit a site of interest for our community. The architectural and engineering, we're recommending that the architect and engineer and the construction manager team leads this analysis effort. What you see before you are some initial evaluation criteria that we think is pertinent to and very essential to the identification of the appropriate site. If you notice on the right-hand side, we have a value, those values mean a lot. So, for example, the size, nine acres, that is what the current site is right now. We know that that site, at least that size or larger, will be necessary for this facility in the configuration it is at this point. So, that is a much greater need when we're looking at the other criteria versus zoning. We know that you change zoning, and if it's the right space and the right place, you have the ability to make the zoning fit for what our needs are. We've also recommended that you look at a priority area of about two miles from our city center. And we have identified our city center from a physical perspective of the intersection of Tennessee and Monroe. So, when you step back and you look at how that fits into what we're trying to achieve for our community, where the objective is, quite frankly, to get the relationship of our police department to the greatest area of our community. So, you see how it kind of fits nicely in the central part of our city. So, the process we have identified would be after we do a call for any and all sites, we'll have like a 30-day period for that. We will have our consultant team take those 10 criteria that you saw, and evaluate each and every one of those sites, and put them in an order, a ranking order, and bring those back to you. Before we bring those back to you, we will also send out public notice to all of those areas that those sites were identified on that short list. So, there's a lot of public input from the very beginning of this process. Then, we will bring that back to you, and you will identify three to five sites for us to go into our next phase, the step two, which is the community review process. So, we'll take those three to five sites. The consultant will go out to the areas in which these sites are located to have a community involvement, they'll listen to the needs and the concerns of the area's citizens, and try to incorporate to the best of their ability a concept that will fit, that addresses the needs and concerns that were identified by the community. They've identified that it'd take about 45 days per site to identify and develop those concepts, so it is a time-consuming process to do that. After the public input, then they will, the consulting team will then do a very deep dive and look at a lot of criteria that is going to identify how much this facility will cost, what are opportunities, proximity to other city facilities, a lot of detailed analysis that would be very pertinent for you all to make a final recommendation. They will bring that analysis back to you, and then you will identify the top-ranked site for us to then negotiate a purchase price for. So, beyond that, you will have design and construction. If you see here, it takes up to 12 months anticipated for the design of the facility. Again, it all is dependent upon what the needs of the community are and the facilities that are brought back to you. Then, phase three is construction is gonna be anticipated 18 to 24 months. So, if you look at what we have done in the green areas, what we are hoping to achieve today, just get direction to select an architect, an engineering firm, move forward with the selection of the site process that we identified today, and then go into purchasing land. We think that we can get all of that accomplished in the process we identified by the end of this year. Takes a year for design, 2020, 2021 and 22 would be two years of construction, and we move into the facility in 2023. So, this is a long process to get to the end game. So, in our agenda item, we had three recommendations. Again, approve the recommended process that we have brought before you. Then, two, give the city manager the authorization to amend the contract with our construction manager to include this site selection process in their contract. And then, lastly, direct staff to bring back the RFP process that is in process already for the architect selection, the architect and engineer selection. So, with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
So, quick question on number three. Where exactly are we with the RFP process for the selection? A recommendation has been made, and you will be bringing it back for our approval or our recommendation?
That is correct. We've had a staff selection committee that has gone through and vetted the two applications that were submitted, and made a final recommendation that we are ready to bring back to you.
Have you had any problems with the RFP process?
There was a little bit of problems initially, that was re-corrected by providing an opportunity for both submitters to come back and present to our committee. And the recommendation is full and solid right now with a clear choice winner.
Okay, before we get into, anybody have a question before we get in discussion? Because we have public comment as well, a question?
I'll wait until after public.
Okay, let's go to public comment. Mr. Treasury Clerk, do we have anybody in the public that'd like to comment on this issue?
Mayor, we do. The first is Darwin Gamble. He'll be followed by Stanley Sims. I think most of our speakers are familiar, but we have three minutes for each of your comments. The light in front of you will be green, and then turn yellow with about 30 seconds remaining, and then it'll turn red. If you'll give your name and address, you may begin.
Mr. Gamble, it's good to see you. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you, good to be here. Darwin Gamble, 1248 Halifax Court. First, I want to thank the commission for changing course on this issue the way that you did. Took a lot of courage in some cases. And I also want to thank the staff for developing the site selection process. It's the kind of process that I was hoping to see. It's very good. I've also looked down the list of evaluation criteria, and they seem reasonable to me. However, I would like to see more of a focus on city-owned property. I think if the city built on city-owned property, of course, it would help with acquisition costs, and it would reduce the hassle of having to negotiate with a property owner and eminent domain and all that kind of stuff. Now, some city properties maybe, that are suitable, may be outside that two-mile radius, so I hope that is more flexible than it appears to be. However, I generally like what I see here. I look forward to seeing that first list of potential sites.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darwin.
Pastor Sims, welcome back, sir.
Haven't seen you in a while.
Haven't seen y'all in a long time. It's killing me. No, I really wanted to come up and say, we need a police department. And I spoke with Commissioner Richardson earlier, and we've been in these trenches a very long time. And him and I, he don't do it like I do it, and I'm a little eccentric. But when we lock down, I believe in an issue, we'll go all the way. And for him to change his position is the epitome of a public servant, because it's not about what you want, it's about the people you represent. So, I wanted to commend you on that publicly, Mr. Commissioner Richardson. My other two minutes and 15 seconds, I really want you all to look at the accessibility to City Hall. Please agenda that item. What we have been told, the accessibility of City Hall is not really what it is. My wife works here, just today, or now I met with Commissioner Matlow. Let me give you an example. Met with Commissioner Matlow on the fourth floor, I had her jacket, because it's cold in here. I take these blood centers ever since I had this stroke. It's cold, y'all are cold, look at y'all, they're cold, they're shaking now. But it's cold in here, so I had to bring my wife's jacket. But I couldn't just leave the fourth floor and deliver her jacket to the third floor. I had to go all the way back down to the desk, tell them I'm going to see my wife to take her jacket, and then come back down. That's like somebody on Community Control, you know, the monitors that they put on? Oh, y'all ain't never had none, but I had one one time. But that's what this feels like. Why in three major buildings, the courthouse, the Capitol, less than one mile of each other? We got less public officials in this building, but we've got more security per square foot than every one in the building. You know, you can go all 23 floors at the Capitol, nobody asks you where you're going, take your watch, they don't do that. So, why are we doing that here? I believe, and it's like I shared with Jerry Matlow, it's a systematic way of oppression. When there was a confusion with me trying to take care of some business here in Tallahassee, I mean, here in City Hall?
You have about 20 seconds.
I know you on me, I'm on Hall if you're tired today. But first thing they threw in my face, you broke security. They didn't try to solve my issue. They leverage, you have breached security, you must leave the building now. They didn't care if I was trying to get my lights turned back on, if my water was off, if I had a calamity in my house. That's why it is essential, and I'm praying that this commission would agenda this item for public access. I think they policing us too much.
Thank you Pastor Sims, certainly do appreciate it.
Jacqueline Perkins, that's the last speaker I have. If there are other speakers, they can fill out a card like this and bring it to me.
Ms. Perkins, great to see you.
Good to see you too. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'm gonna try to get through this in three minutes. My name is Jacqueline Perkins, I'm a lifelong resident of Tallahassee. Grew up on the south side in the Bond neighborhood. My parents were homeowners and business owners in Bond. Though they're deceased, we still own the home, my brother lives there. I'm here not as the Chair of the Greater Bond Neighborhood Safety and Crime Prevention Committee, but as a citizen, and I'm actually here also in that capacity to express my enthusiastic and unapologetic support for the construction of the Police Department Headquarters on the south side of Tallahassee. It is regrettable that a proposed project with so much promise was decimated and dismantled, primarily due to misinformation, distrust, and the vitriolic views, especially or particularly of law enforcement that was expressed during this process. Somehow, the narrative moved from the purpose and the benefits of the facility to the intense feelings of a group of people, most of whom do not live on the south side and who will probably not be here, living here in the next three to five years. Nonetheless, as I've stated before you many times, we should never dismiss the feelings, beliefs, or perceptions of others. It is true, a person's perception is actually their reality. We live in a country where we're all able to express our viewpoints, and we should be respected and able to do so even if we don't agree. I want to commend all of you for allowing everyone to express their respective viewpoints. Unfortunately, however, we missed, we probably missed an opportunity to present the facts comprehensively to all citizens in the community. Nevertheless, we are starting the process over, and we have the opportunity to do so. As you begin the process of reevaluating and reassessing the construction of the facility, I ask that you please reconsider a south-side location, particularly the old sewage treatment plant on Lake Bradford and Gamble. I believe it meets the criteria for consideration as a viable site. And I'm sure we will do a better job of disseminating factual information this time. As you conduct your cost-benefit analyses, please consider the following salient points, and I'll just name a few. I understand that the land is owned by the city, so that addresses a concern that people have. There's zero cost for land acquisition, that will save a whole lot of money. The location allows the city to serve areas on the border of neighborhoods that have historically had high levels of calls for service, so-called hotspots. This location would not disrupt businesses and would invite economic development on the south side and near FAMU and FSU. Most importantly, this location facilitates the continuation of the community-oriented policing and problem-solving squad programs that TPD has effectuated so well that they reduced crime dramatically in our neighborhood and received, and recently received a national award for. And we had the courage to actually recognize and salute the department for what they've done for us. So, we thank you, I thank you for the opportunity. And I am a property owner, and I own homes in three of the neighborhoods that would be affected. So, thank you for the opportunity, and I hope that you will reconsider the south side. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins, certainly appreciate it.
That was the last speaker for item 13.01.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to comment on the recommendation that Ms. Perkins made concerning the treatment plant at Gamble and Lake Bradford, because I had a conversation recently with someone, I don't recall who it was, because one of my issues since I've been on this commission, I think when I came to the commission, we were considering the extension of the fire services fee. And one thing that was brought to my attention at that time is that in that plan was the identification of a fire station on Lake Bradford Road, because in the report, it identified that area is one that had the highest calls for service, but the longest response time. And you all know, that's an area where there are a lot of wood-framed homes, and when they catch fire, they go up, just like that. So, I say that to say this, because the fire services fee will come up for renewal, I think, in 2020, if I'm not mistaken, somebody, Mr. City Manager, do you? I think it's 2020 or 21.
It might be 21, but it's...
2021, but it's coming up soon. So, the point is, is that if that site is considered, that we may want to consider co-locating a fire department on that site as well, if there's enough land to accommodate it. So, I just put that out there as something else for us to consider. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions, yes, may I? Commissioner?
Mr. Mayor and colleagues, my concern is with recommendation number three. The RFP selection process was targeted for a location. We are now not looking at that location anymore, we're looking at locations. So, I'm questioning whether we should continue with the architect-designer that had been recommended, or if we need to go back and, because the scope has changed, to see if we need to re-scope and do a redo of the RFP.
Mr. Manager?
If I could ask Assistant City Manager Tetter, he's been involved in that to answer, provide a response.
Right, so, the major component of this RFP was to demonstrate their ability to work with other similar types of structures and facilities. That is the predominant way this entire RFP process. Did they have the qualifications that was necessary to design a public safety campus and a police facility? The answer was a clear yes with both the applicants that were submitted. So, we felt that we had a great selection to choose from. However, part of their process was, when they were looking at the site that we had, both of the architects and engineering teams presented concepts that they could fit in that site to demonstrate further their ability to be sensitive to the context in which that site was located.
Commissioner? Alright, any other questions, comments, motions? Commissioner Matlow?
Yeah, I think I went through the RFP, and it seemed like we had a few highly qualified architectural firms, but it did seem the presentations were focused on that one location. But just kind of what stuck out to me with our ranking system is, I think, references were 10 points or so, and I think that was probably enough to swing it one way or the other, because they were both highly qualified. But where we're going with this project, what really stuck out to me was the community engagement piece. And the top-ranked bidder, when asked about public opposition to the project, expressed that it was more a case of a misunderstanding than it was a case of the actual project. And I think if we're going into a process to be open and including everybody and bring everybody's voice in, that may not be the best perspective. And when looking at the second-place bidder, you know, they talked a lot of things that stuck out to me, and that was focused on keeping the price down, because this is gonna be an expensive project. And, you know, they were just getting into details about, you know, making sure we had green spaces for the safety of our officers and worrying about suicide. I just really, it seemed to be a more thoughtful approach, and they were so close. So, I could be open to, now that we're adding sites... So I could be open to, now that we're adding site selection, rebidding it, or just bringing back and looking closely at the top three and seeing if things are different from where we're going and what we bid out.
Commissioners.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we accept the recommendations one, two, and three coming from staff.
Okay, motion on the tables for one, two, and three, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Properly seconded by Dr. Bryant. Commissioner, any comments?
I would, yes.
Commissioner Williams.
I would, I would have no problem with recommendations one and two. But I do still think that I would have issue knowing that I submitted a proposal based on a location that was given to me, and now that has changed. So I'm on board with one and two. I do, I would like him to split up, because I would not want to support number three.
Do you have a substitute motion?
I move the recommendations for, recommendations one and two.
Substitute motion on table for options one and two, is there a second?
A second.
Properly seconded by Commissioner Matlow, yes sir.
Now that we're talking about the timing of this, you know, number two has Ajax negotiating the site selection process, and then also the architects, so I was wondering the role that they would play individually or collectively, how those two work together for the site selection process, who's overall on top of it, and that kind of general direction.
Mr. Manager.
Yes, Commissioner, let me, I believe I understand the question. They would pair together, so you've got a construction manager that would help with the site evaluation, the stormwater readiness, access, ingress egress, availability of utilities, kind of some of that hard stuff. They would pair with the architect that would also have that experience from other developments and projects elsewhere and their past experience. And then the architect would complement that by being able to provide renderings or ideas that could help us conceptualize what could fit on a particular site. So they would pair together, they would work for us, they would not work, they would not be a sub to each other. Each would work as a prime to the city, but they would complement each other and work together to provide that final product.
Okay, two other points. To Ms. Perkins' point about the, and I guess Mr. Gamble about the evaluation, she brought up two things that I don't think were highly ranked enough, and one was the cost of land if we're looking at property we already owned. And two, the community input that we've already seen on that list. I want to make sure our first cut list also includes community input. And so if our neighborhoods are bringing things, that it seemed like the selection committee narrowed it down to five to 10. But I want to make sure projects like the specific site that they mentioned are able to be considered in the future, so. And then just a nitpicking point would be just the radius of looking out three miles instead of two miles. A site that somebody recommended was Waukama Shopping Center, and I think that's two-point, was Waukama, I don't know. How long ago that was, the kids at Chuck E. Cheese are probably like, what are you talking about, we're here. But just making sure we have a wide enough scope that, you know, we're not excluding everybody when we narrow it down. So I, can we alter your motion to also include a three-mile radius?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Manager, comment?
Yes, sir, I just wanted to make sure we were clear in how we were characterizing the potential development of all these sites. So we'll call, do a call for properties, and everything will be on the table. So just hypothetically, let's say the public puts forth, and that could be individuals and realtors and brokers and anybody with any interest. In fact, it's already happened tonight. In fact, one of my commissioners just added one to the list tonight, so this is, you know, anybody with those ideas, that will go on a total list. Hypothetically, let's say we hit 30 sites. And then we would ask our construction manager and our architect to work together to work that down based on an evaluation criteria. We appreciate your input on that. Now, we were recommending that you prioritize that be within a certain distance of your urban center. We recommended two miles, there's nothing magic about that other than you don't want to get too far from that. And as we tested it, it was surprising how far two miles was, you know. When you look at it on a map, it was, it's a decently long distance. Nothing magic about that, nothing would be excluded, that does not exclude any, but we would send that signal to the public to say, this is kind of where we're looking. So I just wanted to make sure I provided that clarity.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's great, and I'm not sure how far that site is, but it's probably right around two miles, give or take. So just wanted to make sure we're looking at that. And then if we did, when we develop the evaluation criteria, if we have six or seven neighborhood groups that are all in support of one, I think we should give some sort of weight to how we evaluate that also.
Wonderful. Substitute motion on tables for recommendation number one and two. Seen no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Passes three, two. Now, we have to deal with the item of the RFP for the architect and the engineering services. What is provided to us as staff recommendation is that we move forward with the RFP process that took place to come back and to ratify a decision at the next meeting. The other option would be to scrap this RFP process, start over new, and have staff bring back at the end of that process a recommendation for ratification. Regardless, we need an architect and we need an engineering firm to provide services. So say at the body, what do you want to do?
Well, since I brought it up, I, being a project manager, we deal with budget and scope. And when the scope changes, you need to address the scope. And I know that it may have been, the designs may have been rendered to see if something could fit on a site. But the documents that I reviewed and what I saw were targeted to the location that had been selected. So it is my opinion, and you know, I'm one person, that when scope changes, then either the folks who were bidding on it need to have the opportunity to make some adjustments, or we would need to, in my opinion, start the process again.
Any other comments?
Question.
Doctor Bryant.
Question. So when the RFP was developed, did it specify the area at South Side that we were looking at? Did it specifically say this property?
Madam Attorney.
My understa, I think probably either procurement or Wayne would be better to speak to that in terms of.
Mr. Tedder.
What was actually in the RFP.
Mayor Commissioners, the specifications of the RFP did not have any assumptions to any particular property, because no location had been identified or successfully negotiated.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Matlow.
I don't think it was particularly in the RFP, but everybody knew what site it was based on, and they were all provided a site plan to which they tailored their presentations around. So from watching or listening and watching the slideshows, while it might not have been part of the scope, the presentations that were presented and were scored upon were site-specific. It seemed to me, I think largely it'll be the same people who come back if we put out an RFP, but I understand the point of, you know, if we're gonna do the process, is this different than who else would have applied or if they saw the site selection, and those waters kind of getting muddy, so. Did you make a motion?
I didn't make one.
There's no motion on the table, Commissioner Matlow.
So, yeah, I mean, to me, it's, we open it back up, I don't know how we can open up the RFP to look at it again and make sure. We do that, or we just scrap it and start from scratch, so.
Commissioner, it is possible for you to simply end this procurement and then give direction by motion and agreement of your colleagues to rebid the project.
So is there any legal ramifications if we end this process and start anew?
Well, it is your prerogative under the ordinance to reject all bids.
Okay, so the proper form would be, we would reject, would we open the bids and reject them? Or I guess we've already opened them, because you have a recommendation.
Yes.
So we would just reject all bids, start the process anew?
That is correct.
What's the will of the body, Commissioner Williams Cox?
I move that we begin the RFP process and that we expedite it so that we can make sure we have presentations that speak to size our locations and not a particular location. Because I did see the presentations as well, and they were all, they were focused on the location. So that's my recommend, that's my motion.
Could you say it, state it one more time for me, please.
I move that we begin the RFP process again and do it expeditiously to make sure that we have an architect designer who will look at locations and not a particular location.
Okay, I tell you what, let me put us in the proper format. The first appropriate motion that we need to take is a motion to reject all bids. And if that passes, that officially closes that RFP process, and then we can entertain a motion to start anew.
Okay.
Does that sound good? So the Mayor Pro Tim makes a motion to reject all bids, is there a second to the motion on the table?
Second.
Properly seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any other comments, seen none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Now, Commissioner Williams Cox, you want to make a motion to begin the RFP process anew?
To begin the RFP process and to expedite it so that we are not, you know, lagging.
Define expedite, I mean, I think we're fine with letting the process just run its course.
Whatever the process is, and do it as quickly as we can.
Okay, motion on the table is to begin the RFP process once again for the architectural and engineering firms to make haste? Expedite, I mean, I don't know what expedite means, Commissioner Williams Cox.
I understand, and if I was in that line of work, I could tell you. I'm just saying, we don't want to drag this out any longer than we need to.
Okay, the staff understand direction.
Yes, sir.
Is there a proper second to the motion on the table?
Second.
Properly seconded by Commissioner Matlow, any other comment? Motion on the table is to reopen the RFP process for the selection of architectural and engineering services. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five, zero. Do we have any other business on 13.01?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to bring to your attention, we did receive during the meeting a letter, which we'll get to each of you with some further citizen input, but they were not here for the meeting, and it's our practice that we'll communicate that to you and make it a part of the record.
Excellent, number 13.02, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At your last meeting, you directed staff to prepare an item for your consideration of a motorized scooter pilot program. Julie Christensen in our planning department is here to provide and summarize the steps necessary to establish the program and answer any questions that you have. I'll turn it over to Julie.
Thank you. Hi Commissioners, Mayor Daly, thanks for having me tonight. I'm gonna give you a brief presentation on Agenda Item 13.02. First, I want to say, as a planner, I'm always really excited when we can offer the potential for new transportation and mobility options to our citizens and our visitors. So things like e-scooters and bike share are really exciting for me. But like in many aspects, Florida's regulation of e-scooters is unique. Because of the regulatory framework in this state, there are some safety concerns, and I want to go over some of those right now. So under current Florida regulations, these are state regulations, e-scooters are not permitted on roads or roadways. They're also not permitted on bicycle lanes, sidewalks, or paths. So at the moment, in this city and in the state, there are no places that e-scooters are allowable to be used except for on private property. However, municipalities can enact an ordinance to allow these e-scooters on sidewalks, but we cannot enact an ordinance to allow them in bicycle lanes or on roadways. So if you guys so choose to do an ordinance, we would only be able to allow them to go on our sidewalks in our city. In spite of this, we have received interest from seven vendors. These vendors are Spin, which is partnered with Zagsor and Pace, who provided our bike share, Lime, Slider, Bird, Wind, Razor, and Blue Duck. Staff prepared a matrix comparing characteristics of each vendor, and this is included in the agenda materials. Blue Duck is not included in that matrix, as they didn't reach out until this week, so we didn't have a chance to add it. In that matrix, there are several considerations, and I just want to do a quick rundown for you guys now. There are things like geo-fencing, which gives structure to the coverage area of the e-scooters. It says where they can go. The parking approach, there are different ways that scooter share companies regulate parking. Most require that e-scooters are parked within an operating area and provide safe parking instructions. Some have rating systems in the app that allow riders to rate how the previous rider parked, and then offer incentives for good parking. Others circulate through the community to make sure the e-scooters are parked correctly. Some companies work with the municipality to define specific parking areas. This is important because it regulates where the scooters can be dropped off. It makes sense to have specific parking areas that are agreed upon in a partnership between the city and any e-scooter company that's chosen for a pilot program. Charging methods, there are several different ways that e-scooter companies charge their scooters. Some have on-the-ground operations team, they scoop up all the scooters every night, they take them back to a warehouse and they have them charged there. Others use independent contractors who get incentives or awards to charge the scooters on their own, and then they put them back out. The method of incentivizing individuals to charge e-scooters may not be ideal. This is because we've heard from our university campuses that they're a little bit concerned about charging in dorm rooms and things like that. That's just something that was brought up by university staff. Rebalancing methods are something that we look at. Some companies use employees to rebalance, others provide incentives for people to start their ride in a place where maybe there don't need to be e-scooters and end it someplace where they're more popular. The coverage areas and coordination with partners kind of go hand in hand. Staff reached out to FSU, FAMU, and TCC, and we haven't heard definitively if any of them want to join a pilot, but they are all interested in having e-scooters, but they all have their own concerns. So if they were interested, it would be logical to allow e-scooters to move between our downtown areas and campus and around campus in TCC's case. The number of scooters proposed, if you looked at the matrix, you could see that this range is greatly. One scooter share company proposed 50 scooters, and one proposed 400. So that's something that you could really look into as you're making these decisions. Data sharing is really important, because it will help us determine if any pilot program is successful. And legal matters, three of the vendors who approached the city are involved in unresolved litigation. These legal matters pertain to things like misinformation, malfunctioning equipment, and blocking ADA accessibility on sidewalks. That takes me into some of our concerns, so safety. When you add a new mode of transportation where it's unexpected and where it moves much more quickly than a pedestrian may be expecting, you will intrinsically have conflict. How can we make sure everyone is safely interacting? Which makes us look at our infrastructure availability. Do we have a well enough connected network of our sidewalks? And are they adequate widths to sustain these e-scooters and pedestrians and other things? Since scooters are not allowable on roadways or on bicycle facilities, it's important to ensure that riders are not being encouraged to ride somewhere that's illegal. And finally, liability, who's liable for any issues that do arise? I also think it's really important to note that there are bills in the House and the Senate, the State House and the Senate, that would address bicycle, I'm sorry, e-scooter regulation. If the legislation changes, if e-scooters can be treated as bicycles, they could use our bicycle facilities, and this would alleviate a lot of the safety concerns that I just identified. And these bills are currently making their way through the committees. So I just wanted to provide you guys with an overview of our city procurement process for a pilot project, and also a quick information about the steps that could be taken for this particular pilot process. So with our pilot process at the city, the city can define a pilot program, we can invite one or more companies to participate, we can pick the number of firms and who is invited, we can define the goals of the program, specify the pilot area, and also specify minimum specifications of the scooter itself. But at the end of any pilot program, the piloting companies must discontinue their service. If the commission decides that they like having e-scooters in our city, then they are welcome to put out an RFP for a competitive bid process. This last slide talks about the any pilot program approach for this specific topic. So there's a couple steps that could be recommended. You could establish community partner participation, talk to TCC, FSU, FAMU, local businesses, see who's interested in being a part of a pilot program. Perform an infrastructure analysis. Currently, we have the widths of some of the sidewalks, but we don't know, we have to look at the connectivity, you know, what state they're in, how safe they are, where you can really get on this whole network. Establish a service area, develop parameters around the pilot program success. Develop a communication plan, how do we tell people that they're here? And also, how do we tell people that they may have ridden scooters in other states, but in Florida, they cannot ride them in bike lanes or on the road? They're only allowed in the sidewalk. And we would need commission direction on all of those. Finally, we would need to approve a binding lease agreement with the selected vendors that specifies the terms of the pilot program. After that, we could adopt an ordinance allowing the use of e-scooters on sidewalks. So I know that's a lot of information, but we are seeking city commission direction regarding the development of a motorized scooter pilot program. And I'm here for any questions?
Julie, that was an excellent presentation, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know that you have worked very hard on that in a short period of time, and you did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Before we go to commissioner comment or questions, do we have any members of the public that wishes to? public that wishes to speak?
Mayor, we do have one speaker on this item, Ramona Abernathy-Payne.
Ms. Abernathy-Payne, thank you for joining us. How are you?
How are you?
Great. Your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes, please.
Ramona Abernathy-Payne, 2006 East Indian Head Drive. I have to say, it's very different speaking to you behind, from behind the microphone than it is in person. But I want to thank you all for your service on the city commission. I've been so proud of the efforts that you have put into involving the public in all decisions, and thank you for the chance to speak to you today. Regarding the scooter pilot program, I had the chance to test drive a Lime electric scooter in Optimus Park recently in my neighborhood. Thanks, Max. I can't see that I personally will ever ride one again, but I don't think that...
That's what I see.
I don't, I don't think that should impact the decision to go forward with the pilot program.
I, I don't think we're the target market.
Well, my husband did harm with it, I just couldn't get my balance. I do have a couple of concerns, though. One is the maximum speed. I read somewhere that, that they, some places are allowing them to go 30 miles an hour. I understand that the proposals here are for a governing speed of 15, maximum of 15 miles per hour. I think that's too fast. I've heard suggested 10 miles per hour. If I'm sharing a sidewalk with somebody on an electronic scooter, I want them to go no faster than I can walk to get out of their way. So I would suggest five miles per hour, which is still a fast walking pace. I'm concerned about the ordinance being, the ordinance that would be required to allow this pilot program to go forward needs to have an expiration date so that when the pilot program ends, the ordinance ends and we revert to the scooters no longer being allowed on the sidewalk. If a, an additional pilot program is required or approved or the state changes, come back and do a second ordinance to make that go forward, but don't let the ordinance continue past the pilot program. There was an NPR story last week from San Francisco of a handicap man, artificial leg, taking the city to court over scooter, electronic scooters, electric scooters on the sidewalk because the scooters could move faster than he could get out of their way safely. And finally, I think any ordinance that you write should allow, should require that the scooter rider understand that they must give way to pedestrians, that pedestrians have this right of sight, the...
Right of way.
Pedestrians, thank you, pedestrians have right of way on the sidewalk and that the scooters, riders must always yield to pedestrians in every situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
We do not.
Open up for comment and questions from the commission. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Ramona. I think you made a lot of good suggestions there that may not have been thought of yet. It, it, it seems like we are at, at this tugging moment of, of give and push as we try to move towards this multimodal city, right? We, we want people to be able to ride their bikes and ride things like scooters, but we have concerns about safety. And, you know, we've, we've seen quite a few bike accidents in town. I know on Gain Street, most of the cyclists ride on the sidewalk even though it's a share road because, because they're concerned about the safety in it. From my perspective, and I don't have any, any, any data on this, it seems like people feel safer on the sidewalks on their bikes and things like scooters. And I, I think when we go into if they're going to be allowed in bike lanes and things like that, might be even more unsafe. I'm not sure, but it poses the question, where's, where's the safer place to ride them, but also examining our infrastructure in, in the zone that we want to put them in and make sure there's connectivity and, and handicap access on, on the ramps and, and those sorts of things. Pedestrian should definitely have the right of way and, and be, be respected on the sidewalks. I mean, that's something, bikes with bells pull up behind you and they're shaking your bell and you're jumping out of the way. So, I mean, that's a concern on a bunch of different modes of transportation. So what, what, what I would think if we were to move forward with it, and I think there's seven companies that have approached us, cap it at that, I don't know how many scooter companies there could be, but I imagine they're going to start buying each other out eventually because there's not a market for that many. But if, if we allow the seven who have already actively reached out and showed interest in Tallahassee to participate, and we narrowed it to just a three-month pilot program on the summer months, that would be June, July, and August. This would give us the opportunity to be able to pull it before football season gets in the swing if they're, they're not being kept orderly, and it would give us till June to roll it out. So if the legislature acts, we can consider using them either in the streets or on the sidewalks, wherever we see the most fit at that point. There are a lot of questions, I just kind of answer, just made up some answers for them if they, they seem agreeable to anybody. Total scooters, I would cap it at 800, working with our, our, our community partners. I think parking should be allowed. We should recruit private properties that want to participate in parking and allow, what I've seen in other cities, is along sidewalks, but not to where they, they obstruct handicapped access or any type of access on, on the sidewalks. And I think we'd, we'd have to be diligent about that and, and having some sort of fine structure if, if we see this repeatedly happening where they're blocking sidewalks or being parked improperly or kind of making a mess of the way the city looks. And then I would think that, you know, three or four strikes and you're out and you're just, you know, we terminate you from the city if you can't comply with that safety. I also had some concerns about safety as far as who's liable when we talk about new modes of transportation, and if, if a scooter hits a pedestrian, who's insured for that? I, I think it should be the companies providing the scooters, and I think we could also explore if uninsured or underinsured motorists hits somebody on a scooter to make sure that there's, there's coverage for, for those items also. So that would be my, my rundown of what, what I think would fall into the parameters of trying to do it right and, and address the safety concerns at the same time.
Mr. Mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jeremy, for those questions, because I, I had some issues along those same lines. I guess the first, you know, I, I, I certainly want us to be a multimodal city and provide transportation alternatives for our citizens. And I'm interested in a pilot program, but, but there are issues that are going to have to be addressed. And certainly, the biggest one being if we've got motorized vehicles sharing an eight-foot sidewalk with pedestrians, not a pedestrian, but pedestrians, and how is that going to be navigated? I mean, like I said, I know I'm not the pilot market for these things, but I just remember myself going down that sidewalk and, you know, and there was nobody on the sidewalk but me at that time, fortunately, Mr. Mayor.
You got pictures, we need receipts.
But, but again, that's, that is, that's a very serious issue is the safety of, and I can imagine, you know, on Fridays, I guess it is, when those students are coming up College Avenue, and, and they're coming to the club here on, on, on Adam Street, you know, all those young people in whatever condition they're in, and then there are some riding these scooters and others in groups or, you know, I have concerns there. And I have to tell you that it's a, I don't know how that would be navigated. And then along those same lines is the condition of our infrastructure. You know, we've got sidewalks, I know I've got sidewalks in my neighborhood that have been marked with the red paint for repair, but it's been months now, maybe years, and those sidewalks haven't been repaired. You know, where the, there's a jog in the sidewalk. So if, if somebody was in an accident under that circumstance, I would have to imagine the city is liable. We had a case where a young lady stubbed her toe on a sidewalk and got $150,000 from the city of Tallahassee, and she was walking on the sidewalk. So imagine what would happen, you know, if somebody had an accident on one of these scooters where it was our fault that the sidewalk was not repaired and leveled, and that was the cause of the, of the accident. And then, then the legal actions, the ADA compliance, and Madam Attorney, you may want to address that, and what legal actions have been taken in other cities, just so we have all the information that we need to base this decision on.
Well, you know, it is a growing area right now, and, and some of the litigation is first now is beginning to crop up. And I, what I shared was the issue of Americans with Disabilities Act liability because of the obligation of this government to make sure that our rights of way are kept accessible for persons with disabilities. And there has been a class action lawsuit, which many city attorneys are concerned about, that was filed in, in the state of California, and it involved a, a number of people who are suing, and they're trying to get certified as a class, basically maintaining that the city did not do what was necessary to make sure that there was proper access for people with disabilities. Now, the lawsuit covers more than disability actions, it covers rehabilitation act, it also covers nuisance, it causes negligent, just any kind of hazard, some of the things you spoke of in terms of the uneven sidewalk and, and being on notice of that. And obviously, we will draft and have in place the tightest agreement, license agreement that we can, but that, you know, as you know, does not prevent the city from being sued. So you just have to keep in mind as you make these decisions, you know, do you want to have an opportunity to wait until, for some time, some amount of time, to see how some of these cases are determined, what, you know, if they're initially dismissed because of the fact that there is an indemnification clause in the agreements, but it just, sometime might give us an opportunity to properly assess those types of matters.
Dr. Bryant and Commissioner Williams.
I think the safety issues are far outweigh our initiating even a pilot program now. Somewhere down the road, I think the legislature, we need to be in tune with whatever the outcome of the legislation that's matriculating right now through the process. Whatever that is really should govern how we decide where we go, because I, I think we might be, I'd hate to make a decision tonight and then two weeks from now, two months from now, we have to do another decision when we could have easily waited for that process. And then secondly, there are, I've been given several articles now beyond just the persons with disabilities, but people who have been injured because of scooters and pedestrians in the same space. And then I think even when we get to a pilot, if we get to that, that the universities might be a select place, but they need to decide, is that good for them? And we'll need input on that.
Commissioner Williams Cox.
I just want to say that I was hit by a car, and I was in the pedestrian walkway in the city of Tallahassee, and I did not sue the city of Tallahassee. I sued the individual who hit me. And I think that if we can sustain being hit by a car, which is the likelihood of being hit by a car as opposed to being hit by a scooter is going to be greater because we have more cars than we do scooters. I think that safety is very important. However, if we're, if we're not going to move forward with a pilot because we are afraid of the city being sued, then we can fix that by making sure that the, the companies who own those items are, are held liable and that the city is held harmless if, in the event that, that should happen. With the number of scooters we're talking about, you know, cars outweighing the number of scooters, we got a greater chance of, of individuals being hit by a car than by a scooter. I, I think that if we're looking at the summer months to do a pilot, it could be a scaled down pilot, just to see. We're in a research town. We have two major universities that do a lot of research, and in order to do research, you have to pilot sometimes. And you don't know unless you, you try. So if the concern is safety, then narrow the scope of where the pilot can operate, narrow the, the hours of the day that it can operate so that we can at least begin to look at the possibility. Remember, we, we just did a renewable energy resolution, and so we're, we need to be looking at ways to reduce cars on the, you know, being used. And the way to do that is we've got to look at other modes of transportation, and this is one of the other modes of transportation. People on bicycles are getting hit, people on bicycles are hitting people. You know, so it's, it's really, you know, I'm willing to, to take the chance with those, with that, with that scope of a smaller pilot, hours of the day during, during the summer months when things are slow, just to see where, you know, where we are. And if we're, if we're not there, then let it go. I believe that the Florida Legislature has a lot more work to do than work on scooter legis, legislation. And this is the second day of session, so I don't know how fast things are moving, being it's just the second day.
All right, let me see if I can help bring this in for Landon, because if I can count noses, I'm seeing two and two right now. So why don't we do this, okay? Instead of saying no, let's say, not now. I think we have time, Commissioner Matlow, maybe to give a couple more answers to these questions. If we're proposing June, we got three months. So why don't we give direction to staff that we just don't take action tonight, we can bring it back up and revisit it in a month? We might have more clarification with our town gown partnership with the universities, how that would work. We might have a little bit more clarification on some of the specifics on how it would work, give staff the opportunity to come back with a more flushed out RFP process of, if we got seven companies interested, how are we going to actually, you know, all things being equal, how are we going to pick winners and losers to participate? What exactly is the geographic defined area? How many scooters are we going to look at? Look, I tried one out. They are fun. They are fun.
I did it in the hills, didn't you?
I can, I can see, you know, in a, in a Cascade Park scenario, not 700, but, you know, one or two, yes, it's fun, but that's a safe area in, in a park on a sidewalk. How does that play out on the street? I don't, I don't know. I don't want the issue to necessarily die, but let's get some more information, and I think that we can still work in the proposed timeframe to be able to bring it back. So why don't we just take a breath and maybe bring it back in a month and revisit the issue? Thoughts? Sure. Commissioner Matlow.
I just had a question to Ramona's point, if, if we change the sidewalk ordinance, can, can we have that? For the time, are we opening ourselves up to if we end the pilot program, that ordinance is still in place, do we have to come back and repeal it? Or can we set that to, to coincide with some sort of program?
We can set that the effective date for the ordinance, whatever time we want. So it can be set to end at a certain point, and then you start your...
Yeah, I, I'm open to, to take a month to get more answers on, on, on the questions that were, were asked. Yeah, I think we're, it, it's a lot, a lot better than trying to develop a, a pilot program on the fly up here. So we, we'd love additional input and have it right back in a month.
That's great. So staff, we're not going to take action on this, we're going to postpone action and continue the process to gather more information, and if we can revisit it in a month or so, that'd be wonderful. Excellent. Any further questions or comments on this item? Is that a pretty good compromise being on move forward?
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent. We'll move on to item number 13.03. Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 13.03 is approval of resolution numbers 19R-05, 19R-06, and 19R-07 for eminent domain action for construction of Weems Road pedestrian and, and street safety project. This item requests city commission approval of resolutions authorizing me or my designee to initiate an eminent domain lawsuit in order to acquire private property owned by Circle K Incorporated and CGU Enterprises for the construction of the Weems Road pedestrian and street safety project. The authorization is to require fee simple parcel of 120 square feet in fee simple, a sidewalk slope and maintenance easement, and a temporary construction easement to avoid delay of the proposed construction of the project. Staff is available should you have additional questions regarding this item.
Is there anyone here to speak on the item, Mr. Treasury Clerk?
There is no one here on this item.
All right, Commissioners, thoughts, comments?
Move the item, Mr. Mayor.
Item's been properly moved by the mayor pro tem. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Matlow, seconds. It's seen no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes five zero. We're on item number 13.04. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item seeks your authorization to negotiate and execute a grant agreement with the Northwest Florida Water Management District to help offset a portion of the costs associated with improving the stormwater outfall at the... of the costs associated with improving the stormwater outfall at the Weems Pond Stormwater Treatment Facility. These improvements will afford aesthetic improvements to the current outfall, provide upstream flood reduction, flooding reduction benefits, and further enhance the stormwater treatments within this facility. This work will be performed concurrent with the Weems Road pedestrian and sidewalk safety project, which you just heard about, which includes the addition of turn lane sidewalk, curb and gutter and bridge crossings on Weems Road. Jennifer Porter, our General Manager of Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure, is here to answer any questions you might have.
Wonderful. Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Treasury Clerk?
We do not move the item, Mr. Mayor.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Dr. Bryant. Seen no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. Mr. City Manager, we're on item number 13.05.
Thank you, sir. Airport master plans are required by the FAA and the Florida Department of Transportation or DOT. These master plans assist us with grant funding eligibility. So as we work with our grant funding partners, they look to make sure these future projects are on a list for consideration. They're well thought out and well planned out. And so they're a very useful tool to do. And you do these studies from time to time with some frequency to make sure you have a current effective list that takes into consideration the direction, in this case, of our airport. Tonight's item, you've got thorough information in your agenda, presents an update on the progress for your consideration and feedback. David Pollard, our Airport Director, is here to answer questions. He's joined by our city's, our consultant, Phil Jufko. He's the Associate Vice President of Michael Baker International. Before I turn it over for questions, though, if I could take a point of personal privilege, and I would like to share with everybody in attendance tonight and watching on TV that David Pollard, our very own David Pollard, interim director of our Tallahassee International Airport, is going to be named and recognized next month at the Federal Aviation Administration's Southern Regions Conference as the 2018 Air Carrier Airport Manager of the Year. I'd like to congratulate him. Congratulations, David, and he's available for any questions you might have.
David, congratulations. That's wonderful. We got some free chicken wings for you.
I look forward to it, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Thanks for joining us.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, appointed officials. I'm very pleased to report on the, both the status of the airport and the vision moving forward. As you can imagine, we've put a lot of effort and time into this master plan process, trying to be responsible and look forward to the future with respect to forecast demands and the needs of the airport as we move forward. I would certainly like to recognize the efforts of our airport staff, the support of our city leadership and elected officials, and certainly recognize Michael Baker International and the efforts of Mr. Phil Jufko in particular, his hard work in working with us and trudging through the required review and process and public input and all that we've had along the way, briefing our airport advisory committee, taking those recommendations and boxing them up into what you will see as a summarized document here today and all. So you may have seen and heard in some of our previous press releases, calendar year 2018, we closed out with a 10.3% increase in passenger traffic. That's the highest passenger traffic activity levels at this airport since 2008. So we are on an upward trajectory and that illustrates that we have surpassed the forecast of those years. We've surpassed that and we need to be prepared with a plan that moves us forward to the future and all. These are the required steps in accordance with FAA and Florida Department of Transportation guidance. We have very specific steps we need to take to protect the airspace, to protect the neighborhoods, protect the flight path of those aircraft and all. So we're at the tail end of this process, which was started in 2015. We are now currently reviewing the airport layout plans, deconflicting airspace, looking at those parcels that are available for development, and looking at how we can mute that, meet that forecast demand. Major objectives, I won't read to you here, but from the standpoint of, again, meeting the forecast, traffic, forecast, demand, and doing so in a responsible manner and all, these are some of the major objectives that we followed, which is, again, in accordance with FAA and FDOT criteria. This is the exciting part. I'd like to talk about what I consider the game changers out at the airport. As we look forward, we've worked with our rental cars. They have indicated their preference on a location for new service facilities at the airport, as well as a potential parking garage and all. So we have issued notice per se for the design of that facility. That's underway at this point and all. We're also looking forward to moving forward with design of the International Passenger Processing Facility. That is designed to get customs to the airport. We would be a user fee airport, which means simply that we pay the cost of those customs agents to be here. We anticipate starting with one customs agent with some predefined hours so we can not incur excess costs associated with that. That would lead to the development of a foreign trade zone. The foreign trade zone, we're also working with Michael Baker and their experts as well, is envisioned to encompass eight counties. We've brought this before the commission previously. That has already been approved for us to consent, continue down that path and all. But the foreign trade zone would encompass eight counties within Florida that surround us. And from that standpoint, we would be working with them. And we have received letters of support from all eight of those counties. This is just a 2015 land use analysis that we looked at as a part of the master plan process. We refined that land use analysis to look at things that are currently happening at the airport and some of the projected development that we would see as we move forward. Again, not all this would happen. This is to set the stage for Federal Aviation Administration, Florida Department of Transportation, and other funding opportunities. Oftentimes, we're asked, and that's the number one question will be asked when we submit these grant applications, is, is it reflected in your master plan documents? So we reflect more than we might need. If we don't meet the triggers based on forecasts and projected demand, the project doesn't happen. So you'll see a lot of things here, but it may or may not happen based on traffic activity levels. So as we think about things like the Airport Gateway Project that's being planned within the community and how we marry that up to some internal road circulation at the airport, and also think about the, the project that the state is working on with Capital Circle out in front of the airport, we need to have a plan to provide better circulation and all. And also look at the safety of the curbside area in particular. Those rental cars that are oftentimes running late for their flights and they're speeding curbside as passengers are trying to walk to and from the terminal building. We're looking at that and trying to minimize that traffic as much as we can, but also develop those rental car facilities at the preferred location expressed to us by our rental car service providers. The taxiway system, the main point here is in the red, the shaded red as it comes off the runway, those shaded red pieces of pavement or taxiways out there at the airport. FAA has changed some of their design criteria based upon accidents and incidents that future at other airports that have happened in the past. And so in an effort to increase safety margin of aircraft operations at the airport, FAA has changed that guidance and these sections of red pavement would be coming out and also making that more efficient for the aircraft movement itself as they transition from the runway to the taxiway and to the terminal or ramp area. Air cargo is a big one for us as we are very pleased with the performance of FedEx here locally. We have seen some interest being expressed by other cargo carriers. We need to make, have a plan to develop future parcels for sort and distribution type facilities, similar to what FedEx is doing here. It might be a UPS, it might be a DHL type operator, or some other cargo carrier and all. So cargo, as you know, is a big business in moving things in and out of the community and all. So we want to be prepared for that growth as we see that moving forward. So we've identified areas here with respect to parking of aircraft, protection of the runway environment, protection of the airspace, and also efficient sort and distribution type facilities. Terminal development, what I'd like to point out here, this was in our previous master plan. We did not meet the triggers for the forecast demand during the last master plan process. So as you look at the terminal, the terminal is actually designed to be added on to in baggage claim, for example. If you look at the ends of the terminals, that area shaded in the brown color is designed to be added on to. But again, if we don't meet that forecast demand, it doesn't happen. So we can add on to ticketing, we can add on to baggage claim, we can add on to the A and B concourses if needed and all. But again, if, if the forecast demand isn't there, it doesn't happen. The North Aeronautical Development, this, the shape of this parcel is, is important. You notice it, it cuts off at the corner to the left side of your screen there. You'll notice kind of a strange angle there. That's the airspace. So there's this imaginary airspace and safety area around the different parcels. And so what the master plan process does is it looks at each area, each piece of property. We have a lot of property out there. We know that. But as you back off the protected airspace and the required safety areas and the object-free areas and the building restriction lines, we call them, we have to protect that airspace and that aircraft operating environment as they transition to and from the ramp areas and the potential development locations. So you'll see that corner, that happens to be a runway protection zone or surface area that's protecting those aircraft that are coming into land on that runway there, which is our runway 1-8. Here in the brown, you'll see different areas reflected for expansion of general aviation, the smaller aircraft that are operating out at the airport. As we develop the master plan, we've looked at all aspects of aviation and looking to promote commercial aviation, some of the military traffic that we see, business aviation, and of course, the general aviation or recreational type pilot and all. So again, we'll develop those based upon the need and the demand at the airport. The south ramp, one of our construction managers was here earlier during the proclamation. She had to duck back out to, to get to pavement of the south ramp. So we're wrapping up an over $7 million project, completing that grace section there of our south ramp. We've rebuilt the helicopter parking pads that are existing. However, the master plan process identifies a need for additional helicopter parking. And our proximity in the, in this part of Florida is important because as we saw during the Hurricane Michael, a lot of federal relief operations, state relief operations center upon the airport. And our role there is very, very important to the, to the relief operations. So we reflected additional helicopter parking areas and also some additional development to replace an older hangar that we have out here that was originally, part of the original airport back in the early 60s. And with this, we then just list out all the potential projects and we categorize those into short term, the midterm, and the long-term development type projects that we would envision are possible. And so as we move forward, we'll be looking at these. Each year we come before you to present our capital budget. We let you look at those and, and give us the input on there. And it's important that, to mention that each one of these projects, given the dollar value of them, you're going to see at least three more times, we would come to you three more times. And that is, one, for the budgeting process, two, for the RFP process for design, and three would be for the construction award. So, so you'll have plenty more input on these projects as we move forward. Next steps is basically concurrently, we wanted to get any guidance or input you may wish to give us here today. Concurrently, we've got FAA and FDOT reviewing these documents and addressing and sorting through some of their comments. We expect to have some of the final deliverables from Michael Baker for our review and, and final review here later this month. And then we'll box up those comments and responses and move forward, hopefully by the May or June timeframe to complete the master plan process. And that, of course, ties to the use of land that's tied to the solar facility and some other projects that we have going. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Excellent. Any questions? Any comments? Yes, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So David, your, your airport authority, they, they have been, or advisory group, I guess, is the better way, the term to use. They have been involved in this process and has given input and bought into the master plan that you've developed.
Yes, Commissioner, great question. So we developed a separate website for this process. It's been on the front page of our website. If you pull up our website at flytallahassee.com, you'll see it's one of three main sliders that scroll across the page. You can click on that, you can access the documents, and you can also provide input to us directly. That goes to a group of both airport and, and our planning team at Michael Baker. In addition, we assembled a technical advisory committee. We held four meetings with the technical advisory committee and done two public outreach meetings as well.
Great. Thank you.
Colleagues, let me tell you, I have thoroughly enjoyed working with David. As your appoint person with the airport, we've got amazing things going on. Keep up the great work. Commissioner Bryant?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Let me ask, does the master plan basically deal with airport kinds of issues? Runways and terminals and dot, dot, dot. But it does not necessarily address the bigger picture of business development. I made that a statement, but I'm really asking a question. Is that another kind of plan, a business plan, a strategic plan? Or is that really in this, this master plan?
It, it sets the stage for future development. So I would, I would offer, yes, it does set the stage for, for business development. If I go back a couple of slides, one of the buildings that we put there is designed to promote small business. I've tried to think through, and then working with our partners and our stakeholders, tried to think through all aspects of aviation, as I mentioned. But I also wanted to think about the small business. Small business that maybe doesn't have the capital to come up with a facility or a building and how the airport might be able to help and promote small business as we move forward. So we have the larger businesses, we're seeing an uptick in the number of inquiries we're getting. And we're also rewriting our minimum standards documents to become more business friendly towards those small businesses and other service providers out there. So it's a whole host of issues that the master plan sets the stage for, sets the stage for funding. And if we can leverage our local dollars, perhaps with the state at a 50-50 match, or perhaps with the federal government at a 90% federal government, 5% state, and 5% local, we're getting improvements potentially at a nickel on the dollar.
So as we move toward one of the game changers, which was the foreign trade zone and that facility, we position ourselves to increase business in the area of the airport. Is that a fair statement?
That's correct, but I've also, it also helps us identify and look at how the airport is a more regional asset. And it's a very important message to recognize the regional aspect of the airport and the services that we provide and how the foreign trade zone will help give us a competitive edge over some of those other airports. So when we renamed the airport, you know, we were surrounded by all these international airports by name only. This will give us more of a competitive edge over some of those other airports in the future.
That's kind of going down the avenue I wanted to go down. So I'm just hopeful that we develop at some point some kind of comprehensive plan that includes business development. Because as you get the customs office in place, business really should increase because people will come and want to, you know, have warehouses or whatever to send their products everywhere. So I think eventually that the master plan is obviously foundational, it sounds like.
That's exactly.
Is that right?
It's a foundation for the future growth and development of the airport and, and it's, it's exciting. We have, we have so much going on. And I'll just briefly mention, we're at the early stages of looking at a marketing and communications plan. Again, that will take us forward. Again, that will take us forward at the visibility and the business opportunities that are available at the airport. And soon, very soon, the Florida Department of Transportation will be releasing their, every five years, they do an economic impact study of all Florida airports. And I would offer, this commission will be very pleased when you see the results of that study.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. City Manager for comment?
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to just offer the comment to Commissioner Bryant. I think I know exactly where you're going with the question. We talk about the airport master plan and you've got the inside defense, if you will, the inside defense view, and you've got the outside defense view. And in the scope of the work, it has identified about 500 acres and their potential appropriate uses that could be used based on how you leverage your airport and you grow your economy, but not limited to the airport. That would be inclusive of the targeted industries that we have, like in magnetics. So things that might could take advantage of the international status of the airport, the ability to increase your exports. I share this with, with folks when I have the opportunity. In the last five years, our community has doubled the amount of exports through our airport, so it's grown by 100%. It was $125 million a year to a quarter of a billion dollars a year to now, surprisingly, we export internationally from Tallahassee, and that's largely untapped. So as you, you add a customs facility, which is an investment on behalf of the community, you also leverage the land around the airport that may somehow complement that industry and otherwise complement your magnetics targeted industry.
Thank you.
Any other further comment? Commissioner Williams Cox and then Commissioner Mattla.
Has the governor parked his plane there yet?
He had bought one, he did. We, yes, the governor parks, parks the plane there. We see that activity on a regular basis. I saw it earlier today. We're also working with state DMS to look at, I introduced part of the master plan to state DMS in terms of the things they should be thinking about from the state perspective and their use of the airport as well. So we're working with the state as well as we navigate through this and, and offer our suggestions to them based upon our observations of their various Fish and Wildlife, Florida Department of Law Enforcement, federal Florida Highway Patrol and others that are out there.
Commissioner Mattla?
Yeah, I just want to say, nice work. I think you guys are rocking and rolling out there at the airport. Most of us, you know, we, we go through TSA, get on the plane and leave, so it's good to see the attention to detail outside of, you know, what normal people think about and, and also just seeing that, we talked about being site-ready, that you're preparing acreage, so if we came and said, you know, I need 40 acres to set up a shipping facility, I want to do this, this and this, we're not thinking about where we'll put them, we're just taking out, taking them out to sea sites right away. I think that's the approach we should be going, so we can be ready. So really good job, and I'll, I'll move to accept the, the plan.
Commissioner Mattla has made the motion to accept the updated plan, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Mayor Pro Tem?
Just a very quick question. David, what do you foresee as the impact of the six-laning of Capital Circle from Orange Avenue around to, say, Crawfordville Highway? What impact does that, and is that anticipated in your master plan?
It is, Commissioner. We look very forward to that as it's going to provide intersection improvements. Just yesterday, we had an accident out in front of the airport with injuries. You know, I don't, I don't like to see those things, but things like that, intersection improvements and working with the state to increase the margin of safety out there and, and everything that we can do, the better connectivity to I-10 and the downtown corridor as we are working with other community planners with respect to the Gateway Project and other projects. We're trying, I've, you know, we've hired our airport engineer and I certainly want to recognize her hard work and effort on this. Alicia's done a fantastic job. When she first started, I asked her to please grab a hold of this and, and get it moving forward, and I, I think she's been working very hard ever since she started, but we look forward to those improvements and our internal roadway improvements that will become a part of that, provide for more efficient circulation and, and all which helps improve the overall safety, security and customer efficiency at the airport.
Motion's been probably made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, passage unanimously. David, thank you very much.
Great job, David. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, and I very much appreciate the support.
Yes, sir. We're at the point in the meeting where do we have Mr. Treasurer Clark, any un-agenda speakers, any un-agenda item speakers?
Mayor, we have no speakers who wish to talk about un-agenda matters.
Great. Anybody here want to speak? Seeing none. Moving forward, we're going to close out. Commissioners, anything to share, bring up? Tell you what, we'll start with Dr. Bryant, just work our way down. Dr. Bryant?
Nothing today.
Excellent. Commissioner Williams Cox?
I would like to invite you, my colleagues and those in the audience, to join me in support of 411 Team. It, there will be an event on April 22nd on Earth Day.
Right.
Maya Von Rossum, Esquire, will be speaking at Temple Israel from 6:30 to 8:30, and Dr. Hollifield, Dr. Liz Hollifield, not to be confused with the other Hollifield.
She said, don't blame her for that.
She is embarking upon an environmental project with sale to move from plastic straws to paper straws. And I'm hoping that we can, there's sponsorship levels in here, I'm hoping that we can help facilitate that and eventually move all of our schools and, working in partnership with our Leon County Schools, to move from plastic to paper straws. So I wanted to invite you to celebrate and participate in that. And tomorrow night, the Capital Area Healthy Start Coalition is having their annual Walk to Remember. It is at 5:30 at St. Paul United Methodist Church at Lake Ella. As you know, they do this every year in honor of the babies that we lost in, in the previous year. And so they, they said, Tamika Smith is who shared this with me, there will be a reception for families and then they'll head to the sanctuary for a memorial service, and they'll end with the candlelight walk around Lake Ella. I am unable to attend, but I'm hoping that we will have someone there in support of as we, you know, support families.
Commissioner Mattla?
Yeah, I want to, I want to float an idea and just see if there's any openness to talking about it. You know, I think when we canceled the Town South Police Department location, I think that came with some disappointment on redevelopment of the area. So I'd like us to still, still consider that site for some other type of redevelopment or, or that area and that block. So if, you know, we, we've talked about dropping centers for like tempo and jobs programs and people had expressed concerns of major activity centers like movie theaters or bowling alleys or community-owned grocery stores or having, you know, spaces that are small, small enough for startup businesses that we can rent. And if we, if we're open to going down that, that road to see how we can best serve some of those needs in, in the area with some community input, and, and from my perspective, it would be a way for us to, to jumpstart the development of that area and then try to come up with a 10-year or 15-year exit strategy where we, we would hand over, sell it off to the private sector after we establish kind of the economic input. So it would, it would be a big proposal with a lot of community input, but if, if we're open to exploring that type of possibility, maybe just coming back with a process of how we would get started.
Comment? We'll, we'll keep it under consideration, Commissioner. No, 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 it's a great idea, it really is. I actually have some similar thoughts. I just haven't been able to develop it as well as you have to put it out there. I'm thinking similar things, so, and I think we all are.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think it's, when, when we look at the development that is, is occurring and, and is anticipated with the Orange Avenue Apartments, it certainly is incumbent upon us. And even when I made the motion to, to move away from that site for, for the law enforcement academy, I, I had in mind even then that maybe we could work with the owner of that property to, to look at what, a way that we could make that an economic engine for the area. And so, yeah, I mean, I think your idea is spot-on and, and is something that we should start at least thinking about and, and envisioning because I think there are lots of possibilities there.
I do too. I do too. I think it's, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
There's an organization who used to be there, whose sign is still up there, who is reaching out, South Side Arts Complex. They're, they're reaching out to try to address the needs that they heard at the, at the meetings about homework centers and art, bringing the arts back to the area and those kinds of things. So there, there's interest in people who want to come in and be able to do those kinds of things. So, yeah, absolutely.
Excellent. Good deal.
Oh, Mr. Mayor? I mentioned earlier during the workshop that the other day I was in South City and, and, I mean, I had been in that area before when we did the Operation Safe Neighborhoods, but it just struck me even more so the other day because I saw families walking in the middle of the street and ladies pushing their babies in baby carriages on Texas Street. And there are no, and there's that housing complex on Texas Street, but there's no sidewalk on either side of the street. And so what I'd like for us to do maybe is to take a look at where we are with our, because I know we, maybe two or three years ago, Mr. City Manager, we did prioritize our sidewalks, but maybe we can take another look at that at some point and, and see if we might want to reprioritize. I know, I know. I know, we've been there before. I know.
You're going to open up that can, aren't you?
But, but there, I mean, that area is really in desperate need of sidewalks, especially, you know, where there is high pedestrian traffic and we've got people. And even if we don't look, reopen up the priority listing, if you will, that we look at that when we start budgeting for next year. I, I mean, I'd be comfortable with that even because I know the can of worms that can be opened up when you start wanting to pre- reprioritize lists like that. That's, that's a big one.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Comment on that. And Commissioner Richardson, for the last couple of years, you've championed a couple sidewalks that, that we've got in motion, somewhere in progress, some in construction, some still in design on Putnam and Polk.
Yes.
And so that would be part of that sidewalk network. And where we found some success is very targeted, that we look for grant opportunities to partner with the Department of Transportation, that's been somewhat successful. We know we've got some dollars coming in the future related to blueprint that may unlock more potential. We have ranked historically the sidewalks, frankly, it's almost an endless ranking, one that you will never achieve, and I think that's created consternation and frustration from time to time. So we're sensitive to that because you can only do so many, but you, you mentioned something similar, the commissions mentioned something similar at the budget workshop. So we're working on that. So we'll, we'll certainly work with you and your colleagues on how we rank it, how we try to find targeted dollars, where the need may be in that moment and how it may complement other work that we're doing. We've found a lot of success with that.
Well, and, you know, Texas Street connects Putnam and Polk.
Yes, sir, I recognize that.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, just on, on that topic, I know we brought it up a, a few times, I think that there are some streets that, that need sidewalks more than others that seem to fall through the cracks on the criteria, and, and I think we could identify maybe a handful or some sort of secondary list of this didn't meet the criteria, but some sort of common sense test is like this is where people are walking the most and where they're in the most need, rather than some other things that, you know, I mentioned before. My street doesn't have sidewalks, but we're in a lot less need for them compared to things that connect to a grocery store where, where people walk more, more than they drive, you know, we're fortunate to get, get in the car and drive to the grocery store. So sidewalks would be nice, but, but the need there, so if we can maybe come up with an alternative strategy to just some key projects, you know, that we've heard time and time again through years, and I think, you know, Commissioner Richardson would probably know those streets better than I do, he's, he's been fighting for them, so.
Thank you.
All right. I've got three issues to bring to the table very quickly. Number one, we have decided to move forward with the new RFP process for engineering services with the Public Safety Campus. I'd like to remind my colleagues that we will all probably be contacted by firms that are interested in the process. I am asking staff, both from the City Manager's Office and the City Attorney's Office, please make sure we are well aware when the process begins and we enter the cone of silence. Remember, when the process begins, we by law cannot talk to those that are participating. So to make sure we are 100% compliance, please let us know when we...
Make sure that happens.
Excellent. Number two, I am very proud to announce that my Chief of Staff, Dr. Thomas Whitley, and his wife, Reverend Trinity Whitley, are enjoying the birth of their first child. Davis was born Monday and was really special. Everybody is happy and healthy and doing well. And Monday, if you all recall, is the city of Tallahassee's 195th birthday. And so it was a very, very, very special day and, and they're doing very well. But finally, what's interesting, in preparation for Thomas's leave, I discovered something. The city of Tallahassee does not have a paternity leave policy. So in situations like this, employees are using their personal vacation time, male employees, for leave. Although it would not apply to Thomas with the birth of this child, I am going to work with City Manager's Office to come up with a paternity leave policy for the city of Tallahassee for our consideration, and when appropriate, we'll bring it back to you. Ladies and gentlemen, I have nothing else. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I did have one thing that's, I think every, all of us need to hear. Tallahassee once again has been named one of the most livable cities in the United States of America. That certainly deserves a fact. Yes. The second year in a row that we've been in the top 100 livable places in the country.
That's fantastic. Final comments, I was really proud of the video that we produced together, marking the first 100 days. I don't know about y'all, I've received tremendous feedback.
Yeah.
And I think that periodically throughout the year, maybe two or three times, we should do updates like that.
Every hundred days?
I've heard that.
Every hundred days?
Great.
Eight hundred days?
Every hundred days.
Oh, every hundred days.
And you know, you look back over those first 100 days and I'm real proud of what we've been able to accomplish, the tone we've been able to set and the direction that we're moving forward, and it's a pleasure to serve with each and every one of you. So that was a great meeting, thank you for joining us, we are adjourned.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jeremy.